Okay, we're recording now.
Hey, thank you. So, welcome to the ISO board meeting number 143. We have a pretty tight agenda today, so let's get started. We have received potential regrets from Pepper. He's very late where he is right now, and Glenn is having some technical problems joining, but he will probably join shortly. And then all the other trustees are here. And plus, the new elected trustees, Mika is here, and Mike probably will join later. Other than that, everyone looking at the agenda we posted, anyone has any conflict of interest or wants to recuse himself or herself from any point in the agenda? Okay, good, then we should be okay. So we can actually go to the second point, which is just document. As I said, yes, I always stress this point. It's not that we are approving anything. It's just to document the resolutions that we approved by eVote. So, John, you want to introduce them?
Yeah, like you said, this is a long list of resolutions that we've already passed. About halfway down, it states that we... There's a minor editing thing, because when we elected Richard as treasurer, it wasn't actually a resolution. It was an election, but I'll fix that in a minute.
Okay, good.
So, we're set.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, when I looked at that, I was confused. That's why I sent you an email. So, yeah, let's get it fixed. But anyway, the important thing is to capture that decision. So, thank you. Okay, so then we move on to item number three on the agenda, which is the actionable items from our board that we want to basically pass to the next board. And basically, we have two issues. The first one is something that, yeah, Kevin is scrolling down exactly there. So, the first one is something we always have, because as you know, our actions plans, our action plans have traditionally gone from January to December, while our board, it goes from AGM to AGM. So, in that sense, we have to actually transition in the middle. So, you know, something that we send to the future board always is to continue to support the agreed action plan, and that's point number one. Point number two is that we have been discussing with staff, in particular with Sally, the restructuring and redesign of the ISO fellowship program. So, we had several presentations, and we agreed to support the redesign of the program, and in particular, the monetary implications that it has, because, you know, we need a budget and everything. So, we are also sending the recommendation to the next to the next board to include appropriate funding in the budgets. Okay. Any comments on those? And for the record, Glenn just managed to join, so welcome, Glenn. Okay, so if there's no comments, then we need, you know, someone to move and someone to second. And I cannot see the video, so I see Harris moves, Sean seconds. So, we're gonna do this by raise of, show of hands. So, I'm gonna be asking, yes abstain and no, as usual. So, everybody voting yes, please, raise your hand. Okay, everybody voting abstain, please raise your hands. Everybody voting no, raise your hands. Okay, so, Desiree, just, did you vote abstain or yes?
No, it was yes, very delayed, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so the resolution passes unanimously. Well, unanimously, because Pepper is not here. Okay, thank you. So, moving on to point number four in the agenda, which is the recognition of the outgoing PIR board members. And in this case, we have Roberto, Tosca, and Susan. So, as usual, you know, we thank them very much for all the hard work they did while on the PIR board. And I need again someone to move and someone to second. So, Hans Peter moves, Olga seconds. And we're gonna pass this by acclamation, so. And again, thanks a lot for the hard work that they did in this difficult period as well. There were a lot of things going on. So, thanks a lot, Roberto, Tosca, and Susan. Then, we have a bunch of committee reports. So, I will give the floor to the committee chairs to just explain briefly. We have allocated five minutes, but don't feel pressured to fill five minutes if you don't need to. And don't feel pressured to shorten the description if you need to for some reason as well. So, the first one in line is Walid. Walid, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I mean, as you may have already read the final elections committee report, there were a lot of interesting findings as well as conclusions from the experience. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the committee members, Sean, and of course Hans Peter, and several others that are not on the call. And so, I also wanted to bring in the importance of the changes that we're doing this time, because unlike earlier years, we have proposed to shorten the period of voting to two weeks instead of four, and allow the first two weeks to be exclusively for the forum discussions. And this has been driven by, after we discussed this and formulated this upon some feedback that we got. And so, I don't wanna take longer than that. You've already probably read the report. And if you have any questions or thoughts, you're welcome to provide them.
Okay, thank you, Walid. So, you covered both points number five and six, which is the procedures. So, let's start by accepting the report and then pass the second resolution, which is the procedures. Is that okay? Okay, good. So, I need, as usual, someone to move. Okay, Olga moves, Desiree seconds. So, there is, the resolution, I will read it, is the resolution is to accept the elections committee. And it's resolved that the report of the 2018 to 19 election committee is accepted. Again, I'm gonna ask for, you know, show of hands. So, yes abstain and no. Everybody voting yes? Everybody abstaining? And everybody voting no? So, the resolution passes unanimously as well. And now, moving to number six, which is what Walid was addressing before, which is the... I mean, it's not such a material change, but it's indeed a change in the, basically timeframe. We discuss it within the board, and we decided that, you know, it was basically straightforward to approve it without, you know, too much community consultation, because it just affects the timing, and people will have plenty of time. And besides, because it made sense to basically have people vote after the discussions on the candidates. It seemed a bit weird that, you know, people would vote before even, you know, understanding what the candidates had to say. So, I think it's kind of common sense to approve it. So, that was kind of the discussion we had. And again, I need someone to move and someone... So, Walid moves, that's good. Okay, Glenn seconds, thank you. And again, show of hands for yes? Okay, abstain? No votes? So, the resolution passes unanimously. And thanks, Walid, and the rest of the committee for the hard work.
I'm just a quick note. I mean, Peter hasn't voted, so it may not be... Pepper, sorry, Pepper hasn't voted, so maybe not.
I noted this before, that basically, when I say unanimously is, you know, trustees who are present. And since we have all room, it's completely okay to pass a resolution like this.
Yeah, Mr. Secretary notes that the people present at the meeting are the ones who vote, so it is unanimous.
Yeah, okay, okay. But if you would like me to use a different term, you know, I can use a different term.
No, it's fine.
Okay, good. Excellent. Okay, where I was, point number seven in the agenda, on the agenda, actually. Okay. So, this is the governance committee report. So, Desiree, please, do you want to introduce the report?
Thank you, Gonzalo. I believe also that trustees have read the report that was sent to the email a few days ago. And it's, I also like to thank all the members, and that's also noted in the report to all the committee members who worked very hard, Sean Turner, Hans Peter Detler, Glenn McKnight, Hiroshi, but also David Frilio, who was there first time, not a core member like Andrew, ex-officio of the committee. So, the committee wrote the report with some recommendations. And the recommendations were actually something that we have discussed on the board list. It was quite a busy year for the governance committee, and the report lists all the board policies and documents that were approved by the board. And it notes, you know, how many times we met and in person, and how many teleconference meetings. So, we noted that the documents we worked on were part of the annual work plan, and those were the governance committee guidance to the NOMCOM. And the report also notes that some of these policies are quite of an iterative nature, because they go back to the board and back to the committee. So, in summary, our recommendation says that if the committee doesn't reach a consensus by all members within three to four weeks, it actually says four now, that it should...
There was a typo there, yeah.
There should be passed back to the whole board to review, so, you know, trying to improve the cycles. So, the documents that the committee worked on were the board document retention and management policy that included mail archive policy, and we also discussed the storage of other board documents, and the travel policy of trustees that was adopted in February, the revision of all the committee charters. And I think this is something, the work that was first done ever. Thank Sean and everyone else for leading work on this. So, all the board committees' charges are now up to date, and all the changes have been approved in March. And likewise, we work with the secretary to align some of the text in the bylaws that are reflected in this committee charters. And we did the revision of the onboarding material, as well as the self-evaluation of board members was complete. And this year, what was different is that we had board source consultant who actually analyzed our survey and gave some recommendations. So, all these recommendations are in the report as to areas where the board could actually dedicate and devote some more time to think about whatever is understood by the culture and the program oversight and board composition, thinking how this board can look forward, who would be the next board members, and whether there should be some extra effort dedicated to think about future nominations and the board structure. So, these are the three areas that were flagged in the board source report. And there in the, in the report. The, also what is new this year is this pilot mentor program, and we have now four volunteers, Hans Peter Detler, Glenn McKnight, Richard Barnes, and Olga, who volunteered to be there for Mika and Mike once they joined the board officially. And the recommendation is that this process of this pilot mentor program is reviewed within the six months, how it's working. And what else is there from the recommendations? I think we, apart from this improving the efficiency of the committee, it's really, sometimes trying to evaluate the realistic time it takes to do work. And we also noted what worked well, that there were some subcommittees and subgroups and some documents we had person allocated to hold the pen. So, the mix of those worked both, and that is a recommendation that the next government's governance committee does the same. However, one of the things, I think, that came out in our discussions was that it would really be good to obtain legal support for someone who understands corporate governance issues, because our, that is also an advice, I think, we got, because general counsel that does not necessarily understand all the, for example, conflict of interest issues and all our documents. We are more aware of that process. So, it could be very useful that the next governance committee chair or obtains such legal help for their work, because especially since there will be a review of the NOMCOM task and the NOMCOM guidance, and there will be some COI issues that would need to be tackled. In addition to that, I think we updated the annual work plan like all the other committees, and it tried to really align that with some calendar months when this work would be done by the committee for the next chair and members, and how to organize themselves. So, the continuation with board self-evaluation process was also mentioned, and dedication of more time. I have nothing else to add to that, but if anybody else has any questions, I'm here.
Okay, thanks, Desiree. Thanks a lot. And thanks the whole committee and you, of course, for all the hard work. As you said, this was indeed a busy year. Any, any questions for Desiree or the committee? Any comments? Okay, then we move on to passing the resolution on accepting the report. So, I need someone who moves. Okay, so Walid moves, Olga seconds, yes. Okay, and again, you know, show of hands. So, who votes yes? And abstentions? And no votes? Okay, perfect. So, the resolution passes unanimously, or however you want to say that. And thanks a lot for the report, Desiree. Excellent. So, moving on, the next point in the agenda is on the driver, which is the compensation committee report. So, the compensation committee, actually, this year, I mean, we did what we did every, what we do every year, which is to set goals for the CEO and evaluate the goals for, you know, the previous year. With this year, there's two things to point out, that basically, we had two CEOs. So, we had Kathy until September, and then Andrew took over. So, we did this for Kathy, and then we did that for Andrew. So, that was all done. And then, if you go to the committee charter, you will see that there's several other tasks by the compensation committee, that they are more about, you know, deciding who are disqualified persons, setting up, you know, guidelines for senior executive compensation, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, obviously, those tasks, they shouldn't be done by the compensation committee itself. It should be done in collaboration with staff, and then basically, you know, we would approve it and work with the input they prepare. Since, as you know, there were some changes in the structure of the HR function in particular, who is basically the function that is more naturally, you know, able to deal with these things. I've been working with them, and now in, I mean, it's gonna be in a matter of days. They will basically send me a proposal to how, you know, we could work with the compensation committee and HR to decide on these things and start basically from the AGM on. So, in that sense, I captured that in the report, and that's basically the only thing that probably is worth noting, that, you know, we will, we will basically make sure that we have processes in place to work on those other tasks, which, you know, involve more executives than just Andrew. As I said, it's, you know, disqualified people like, you know, people like Sandy. Any questions or comments? Okay, good. So, then I need someone to move and someone to second. So, Hans Peter moves, Desiree seconds. And again, who votes yes? Please, raise your hand. Okay, abstentions? No votes? And Glenn, you don't have video, so what do you vote? Yes, okay, so the resolution passes unanimously. Excellent. Okay, good. And then, moving on to point number nine in the agenda, which I'm the driver again. So, this is the executives committee. And as you know, we, a few years ago, we basically and know the same, yeah, no, I understand, yeah, okay. Yeah, exactly, yeah, okay. I saw some messages here, yes. So, I'm just counting voting trustees. And so, the executive committee, as you know, we were, we were basically restructuring a few years ago with the intention that basically, the board itself deals with, you know, most of the things that the executive committee used to deal with. It has been working quite well, so this year, the executive committee didn't even meet. So, as you know, we have formally, I think, is the officers. So, basically, those are the members of the executive committee. But as I said, this year, there was nothing to talk about. For next year, we intend to do the same, and the only, the only time where we could meet or we would need to meet is if there's something really pressing, really urgent, where we cannot get actually the whole board to meet, and we need to make a decision in a matter of hours or something like that. But usually, you know, that's not the case. So, it's kind of having the committee just, it's a formality. So, that's what the report said, very, very brief report, just saying that we did nothing this year. I need some, well, any questions or comments? Okay, good. So, again, I need someone to move and someone to second. So, Olga moves, Desiree seconds. Okay, so, yes votes, please, raise your hand. Abstentions? No votes? And Glenn votes yes. So, the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and then moving on to point number 10 on the agenda, which is the independent auditors' report. And John, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Every year, excuse me, every year, I saw that an independent auditing firm looks at ISO's financial statements and reviews it with the audit committee. They did it this year. They were very happy with it. One thing we, one thing we do is, is the staff steps out of the room, and then they talk privately to us, and they still said, they still said positive things. So, they, the audit, the auditors are totally happy with our report, and they signed off, and sent us a nice letter about it, which I, which I think we should suggest, which I think we should accept. So, I move, we accept it.
Exactly. Assuming that there's no questions, no questions, comments? Okay, so I need someone to second. Harris seconds. Okay. So, again, yes. Oh, and I see Pepper joined. Peppin, Pepper, can you hear us?
I can hear you very, very intermittently, and it's been a challenge to get on, but, yeah.
Okay, good. Well, I hope, don't turn the video, because otherwise, you know, we would kill your bandwidth. But I hope at least you can, you know, follow, follow the meeting. So, we are actually voting now on accepting the report by the independent auditor. Okay, so, yes votes, please, raise your hands. Abstentions? And no votes? Okay, and if you, okay, so Glenn votes yes, and Pepper, I need you to vote on this. Yes abstention or no? Yes. Okay. Okay, well, we, I mean, we can show in the minutes, John, that Pepper was not still fully joined, because he's having technical difficulties. So, I would say that the resolution passes unanimously if nobody objects, because I see Pepper, you know, coming on and off.
My video is, my video is turned off.
Okay.
But I can't turn off your video. And so, it makes it unstable. So, I have almost no bandwidth here in Vanuatu.
Oh, I see.
Nice IGF. Maybe you can type in a chat line.
Okay, Pepper, you can follow the chat room. Okay, good. Anyway, the, the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, Pepper votes yes, so that fixes the issue. The resolution passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, so next on the agenda is, again, John, this time about the audit committee report. So, John, please.
Yeah, I mean, the audit committee did the same thing this year. It does every year. We approved the financial statements. We approved the 990. One thing we did not do was to accept all of the conflict of interest statements, because we didn't get them all. And I think this is something we need to talk about at the AGM to make both the schedule and the contents of the, of the COIs more formal, just so that they're more consistent, and we have them all. But the, but the report says what we did, so I move that we accept it.
Okay, before we do that, Glenn has a question. So, Glenn, please.
Just back to the previous report. I know that it sounded like a great, great report, but it lacked the details, John. So, what are some of the things that they, did they look at? And is there areas that they identified that they suggest? I'm not saying improvement, but areas that, that we could actually approve in certain areas? Is there anything that came out of their, their report, rather than just a rubber stamp?
Well, remember, they're just looking at, they're just looking at our financials. And they do what auditors always do, meaning is they, you know, they, they test the various things, you know. There's, you know, they look and make sure there's documents that, you know, they ask, they ask for documents to match that ensure that, check that they match what's in the report. And no, they really had nothing, nothing to suggest at all. They're, they're very happy with Sandy's performance.
Great, great. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you, John. Okay, so John has moved to accept the report. I need someone to second. Walid was faster. Wait a second. Harris has another question. Okay, Harris? No? You are muted, Harris.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm trying to unmute it. No, no, I just, it's actually nothing to do with the report. It's, I just, today I had an interesting conversation with a friend of mine, who was telling me that auditors, when they write an auditors' report and get it, you know, their opinion and whatever, and then when it is signed off in the audit report, auditors don't carry liability. I'm just kind of curious, I just want to leave a thought there, because we can have it offline discussion. But I heard this, and I thought, I was a bit confused at that point. Apparently, some legal systems, the auditors do not carry liability. It is up to them, up to the organization that takes the auditors' report and then signs it off, the CEO, whoever signs off the auditor or the CFO of auditors' report, basically, dropping it. So, I thought that was, so it's just a comment I just wanted to make, so we can talk about it later.
Yeah, we can talk about this later. In the US, I mean, all the auditors are saying is that they looked at the report and it appeared to be correct. And they, and they specifically say that if there, if there were some sophisticated fraud going on, they might not have protected it. I don't think anybody thinks there is. But, you know, we can talk about Enron and Arthur Andersen and stuff like that. But I think the best time to do that is over an appropriate beverage in Montreal.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Sorry about the interruption, yeah.
Yeah, we can talk about liability discharge and all that, so we will make sure that we add it to the agenda. So, oh, it's Mike. Okay, so Mike just joined. Okay, welcome, Mike.
Hi, glad to be here.
Absolutely. Okay, welcome. Thank you. Okay, so now to get again, John has moved, and Walid has seconded. So, now we are gonna try to accept the, the report of the audit committee if I don't get any more questions. Okay, Harris? Oh, no, okay. I thought that was another question. So, yes votes? Okay, nope, abstentions? No votes? Okay, and I need Glenn to tell me what, and Pepper? Okay, yes, yes. So, the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. I saw Harris raising his hand, and I thought he was interrupting me again. Exactly. Okay, thank you. The resolution passes unanimously. Then, we're gonna move on to the finance committee report. So, Richard, the floor is yours.
Thanks, and I see Kevin has put the agenda in order of submission here. I apologize for getting this out quite late yesterday. I just wanted to call out three main points here. First high point is that, you know, we're doing pretty good budget-wise in 2018. We were a little under on revenue, largely due to shortfall in non-PIR revenues, and things like sponsorship, membership revenue, which I'll come to a bit more later. But we had some, some shortfalls in spending as well, which made up for that largely due to not hiring quite as many people as we expected to. So, things, things came out in the wash in 2018, and we ended up well within budget. The second point I had is that we've changed over our investment advisor over the course of about most of the last year. Sean, correct me if I'm wrong with timeline here, but we, as of this report last year, we're still working with Morgan Stanley as financial advisors to manage things like the continuity fund. And now, we have the foundation funds and the endowments, all these things that we have invested. We want to keep going. Over the past, across the past year, we've been transitioning that over to Goldman Sachs following the RFP process that Sean and Sandy largely ran. The committee has been working with them for the past several months to kind of establish the bounds, within which they should be looking at investments, you know, what sort of considerations, what risk profiles or our tolerances are. And so, we've got a, we approved a revised investment policy that had kind of been code the first iteration of that, and we're working with them to iterate, continue to refine those, especially around things like environmental, social governance concerns. So, that's, I think it's been very positive so far. It looks like it will continue to be in the next year. The one kind of forward-looking thing I wanted to highlight is that is related to this decline in non-PIR revenues, so things like membership. We've all heard about the ongoing issues with... So things like membership, we've all heard about the ongoing issues with membership. And we just want to highlight that as something that we should keep an eye on from a financial perspective. Because when you pair that up, you know, the non-PIR revenue with the public support tests, that dictates how much revenue we can take from PIR into ISOC. So it dictates the overall budget that ISOC can have. So we just wanted to flag that, you know, making progress on stabilizing or increasing that non-PIR revenue, developing new sources of revenue should be a priority for the board and the finance committee coming here. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions to Richard or to Sean?
Yeah, Sean has to take three quarters of the questions.
Yeah. Yeah, Richard didn't mention all the mistakes that happened during the year. They are because of Sean.
I've had to do in my couple of months here.
Just kidding. Thanks to you guys and the finance committee. I mean, it's always really important to check, you know, the money flow and everything. So. Okay, so no questions. I need someone to move. Okay, so Olga moves and Hans Peter seconds. Yes. Okay, good. So again, yes votes, please raise your hands. Okay, abstentions? No votes? Okay, and I see Pepper voting yes and Glenn voting yes. So the resolution passes unanimously. Perfect. Okay, so the next point in the agenda is is related to this one, which is the recognition of Sean for serving as a treasurer. So Richard.
Yeah, so this is, you know, as we were ironically saying, contrary to the jokes we're just making Sean, it turned over to the next treasurer, a house in good order. So I'm very appreciative to that. And I'm also appreciative that, you know, the past couple of treasurers, Jason and Sean, have taken a long-term view to developing folks and having continuity in the treasurer role. So I'm appreciative to Sean for working with the finance committee to make sure there are candidates to succeed him and having a really quite smooth handoff here. So I personally have benefited from his good service. I think we all benefit in terms of the solid financial organization here. And the good relationship we've had between the board and the financial team, Sandy especially, that Sean has learned even later. So I would like to move that we pass this resolution. It's in the agenda. Recognizing Sean for his services, treasurer.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Anybody seconds? Who is not Sean? Okay. Olga seconds. Okay, and I think we can pass this by acclamation, acclamation. I was gonna say by clapping, but I was missing the word. Okay, thank you. And thanks again, Sean. I mean, indeed, you know, Richard, you have big shoes to fill. Okay, so basically this takes us to the end of the planned agenda. So now I'm moving to AOB. Do we have any AOB at this point? Okay, so seeing none, I'm gonna move to close the meeting. Thank you all for attending. So Kevin, you can stop the recording.
Yeah, as a reminder, we have to move to a separate call for the working board call, just as a security feature and the recording and all that.
Oh, yeah, true.
So I'm posting that in the chat here.
So I also posted the links in the Slack general channel a few minutes ago.
I was early. I was trying to be in that call earlier.
Always one step ahead, Sean. If somebody needs a bio break, do your thing, do two or three minutes, but I will expect everybody in the other call in like, you know, three minutes, let's say. See you later. Bye bye.